Abrielle. Okay, I think I see us all here. Thank you. Why don't we go ahead. Melissa, let me know when we're ready, please.
We are ready.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of December the 8th, 2020, the last regular scheduled meeting for the year. City Clerk, can you please take role?
Councilmember Davis.
I am here.
Councilmember Mason.
Yes.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. All right, folks, as a team, if we can all rise and give it one more time with the pledge of allegiance from the council to the rest.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in the heart.
All right, thank you all. Public comments. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff or investigation and/or action where appropriate. Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing our actions upon any matter not identified to state law. And we will be, under presentation for outgoing council member, we will open it to the public, as well as at the conclusion of all the swearing ins, we'll open it up as well. So if it's other than items that are not on the agenda, so if it has to do with the acknowledgement of Councilmember Davis, or if it has to do with the swearing in of members, we'll hold that until the end of that. City Clerk.
Okay, the first speaker is Jay Davis. Just one moment. I'm trying to unmute. Just one moment. It is not allowing me to unmute the speaker, so for now I will... I don't know what's going on there. We'll move them over and we'll bring in the next speaker.
I don't think you need to... He won't be speaking, so it's good. I just handed something.
I wondered, but I didn't know for sure.
Yeah, so let me... I'm sorry about that. I will go ahead and turn my background off. I think maybe you can see it better, but I wanted to just say thank you, everybody, for what has just arrived. And so you can... I just... It's sort of beautiful arrangement, and so that is absolutely beautiful. So thank you so much, and something in a box.
Jim, Mr. Davis, because he's bigger than me, is a little off cue, off script, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Okay, let's move on. But thank you, Mr. Davis, for your help. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Paul Wapensky. Mr. Wapensky, I'm bringing you in. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. On the public comments that are written that are on the website by Barbara and Oprah Pronounced her last name correctly, Laraya, I totally agree with her. If you read that, there's a lot of ink, red ink, in the budget, and I won't go over all of it, but I will say this: City Services needs to get a serious quick fix, or we should sell it. I mean, it's just bleeding. It's like $14 million in the hole. I mean, there's people up there making a lot of money in salaries, and they need to fix this thing because it's a drag on our budget. And I just think we need to do something about it pretty quick, or we're going to be in real, real trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next speaker, please.
Okay, the next speaker is Tim O'Brien. Tim, I'm trying to bring you in the room. Just one second. Hi, Tim, are you able to hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just a concern with a lot of residents that are concerned with how the city is taking care of cleaning up the city. There's certain areas, especially 380, the underpass there, that's been cleaned up before by Mayor Medina and Councilmember Salazar did a great job. Just like to see it a little more cleaner there. There's nobody living there either. So if we can get Caltrans or in the city to collaborate on cleaning that area up, that'd be great, and maybe recommend to Caltrans to fence it in like they've done on their other properties, on the other underpasses, to keep it clean and for, you know, so it doesn't become a dump site. It would be great. We're a special city, and we really love our city. We want us to be clean as possible and not to encourage people to dump stuff, especially on Huntington. You know, I've talked about it many times, about Huntington, from Sylvan to San Felipe. We've got to get something up there. I mean, we've got street cleaning, that's great, but that's not doing at all. That's not correcting the problem, the main problem. If we can get some signs to discourage dumping there as well, that probably can help out a little bit. Maybe put a fine up there just to discourage people from dumping, like $1,000 if you're caught dumping, you know? That might help deter people from dumping. And there's people that live right across the street from this area, and if I, you know, if I lived there, I cannot tolerate this at all. I mean, I drive by it many times, walk by it. It's really discouraging. So if we, you know, if it's not all of our property, I know that, I know it's Caltrans, Caltrain, Art, it's all of us in this together. So if we can all collaborate and do our due diligence to keep it clean, all the residents would really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next is Jeffrey Tong. Just one moment, Jeffrey, while I bring you over. Okay, I'm trying to get Jeffrey unmuted. Just one moment. Hi, Jeffrey, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, considering the City Council has already committed to adopting district elections by November 2022, I'm requesting that you put on the first City Council Agenda of 2021 a resolution to adopt the city charter. A city charter will greatly expand San Bruno's options, which are currently limited by the state's general law. Once a City Council decides to adopt a city charter, the City Council must immediately form a city charter commission and an environmental sustainability commission. This charter commission should conduct extensive public outreach and render its findings in time to hold a special election by November 2021. The city charter should be adopted before district election deadline. If you wait until January 2022, you won't have any options. So even before the city charter is complete, an environmental sustainability commission must be formed to draft a climate action plan. A climate action plan should become a fundamental basis of San Bruno's general plan, and it should include habitat restoration and car-free transit ways. So as climate change is already here, the climate action plan is long overdue, and you need a climate action plan yesterday. So, but today is better than tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next, we have Raul Gomez. Hi, Raul, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Hello, good evening, Honorable Mayor Rico Medina and members of the council. My name is Raul Gomez. I'm a lifetime San Bruno resident. I think I know most of you guys. And today, I really want to...
One moment here, sorry. I don't know what happened there. Sounds like he got cut off. Just one moment. Mr. Gomez, are you able to unmute yourself? There you are again. Can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, there you are. Sorry about that. We don't know what happened.
How much did you get? Should I start from...
We heard you saying hello to the council.
All right, cool. All right, so my name's Raul Gomez, as you all know. But I'd like to just bring to your attention our short-term rental policies here in San Bruno, more specifically Airbnbs, and what our current stance is. I did a little Google search, and what I was able to find was a letter written by our city attorney, Mark Zaffarino, in the sense that it outlined a few things, and it was actually adopted in the 80s, so it was pretty dated. So I'm hoping that we have a more current policy or some kind of ordinance really governing what STRs really are, or Airbnbs are doing in San Bruno, and really how we're managing them. Really, the letter I was able to find from the 80s outlined that hotels are not permitted in residential zoning districts, and that boarding houses are permitted in residential districts with a conditional use permit. And a city council may consider a number of objectives when deciding whether and how to regulate these STRs or Airbnbs. And so the letter actually called for a direction regarding whether the city should prohibit or regulate these Airbnbs. And so I'm just wanting to bring this out in that, like I said, you know, the letter was dated, you know, back in the 80s, that was a while ago, and just wondering if we do have an update. This is a new era, this is a new time, and this is an issue for me for the following reasons. Anyone with internet access can apply to really be an Airbnb house and have people come and occupy your house. I can actually say I live on Poplar Avenue, and we do actually have an Airbnb here on our block, and it is a nuisance. I really don't appreciate having people putting cigarette butts out on my front driveway as they're waiting for their Uber ride, or doing various things in the middle of the night. It's just, it's not comfortable for me or my family, and I just hope that the city is considering, you know, again, what the policies are in San Bruno to support the STRs or Airbnbs within San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Next speaker, please.
I believe that is it. I see no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number four, announcements and presentations. The first one will be receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. That will be done by Jennifer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. We're just going to pull up the presentation quickly. My name is Jennifer Dianos, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here this evening on behalf of our Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team, and I'm here to provide an update to you, including our... Oh, my clicker isn't working here. Here we go. Including our local statistics, our status on the blueprint for a safer economy, a reminder of safer holidays and travel, and I will provide some information on how our city team has modified our services to support our community. Of course, I'll be available for questions at the conclusion of the presentation. And we'll start here with the local statistics. So in San Bruno, there are a total of 770 positive COVID-19 cases as of last Friday, December 4. The last report to council included an update of 639 cases in San Bruno. The San Mateo County Health Data Dashboard here on the screen shows that as of December 7, there were 16,371 COVID cases in our county and a total of 177 deaths. These statistics are all pulled from the San Mateo County Health website, and that is at smchhealth.org. It's also linked on the screen for you. And this update, I've also included hospital data, as it has been talked a lot about recently and has piqued many people's interest, given the recent actions taken by the state, which I'll go over briefly over the next two slides. And as you can see on the screen, it is a little hard to see just because data is so small, but the information is as of December 7, and it shows that we're currently at 84 COVID patients in the county and the hospital. And with that, about 60 beds of the ICU units are in use, and zero of the surge beds are in use. Our county remains in the widespread or the purple tier on the blueprint for a safer economy, similar to many, or I guess I should say most counties in the state. Our adjusted case rate, you can see here, is 11.6, and anything over seven remains in the purple tier. And you'll notice on the screen the 34.9% ICU availability in our county, and that correlates to what we just looked at. Governor Newsom just last week announced regions throughout the state and criteria related to availability of ICU beds triggering a stay-at-home order. On the screen, you could see San Mateo County falls in the Bay Area region, along with Alameda, Contra Costa, Marin, Monterey, Napa, San Francisco, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, Solano, and Sonoma Counties. Our region is one of the very few that did not initially fall under a stay-at-home order. However, several of our neighboring agencies initiated their own stay-at-home order early. San Mateo County did not. San Mateo County Health Officer Scott Morrow issued a statement yesterday, December 7, with more information on why he did not join other health officials in this action. I recommend that you read the statement in its entirety. It is available on the San Mateo County Health Department website, and that's at smchhealth.org. On the screen here, I took the excerpt from the end of the statement as a reminder to our community about the importance of simple and now familiar actions that we can and should all take to reduce the spread of COVID. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read the entire excerpt aloud, but it is important to note that Dr. Morrow emphasizes no gathering, the importance of the use of face covering, social distancing, and to not move around, meaning to try to stay at home to avoid unessential travel and activities. And there is a link at the bottom of this slide that will take you directly to the statement to read more. The state also announced the launch of California Notify, which helps make connections of possible exposures to COVID-19. The application will launch later this week, and if you're interested in learning more, you can visit the state's website, it's linked directly to the application, and that's at covid19.ca.gov. Now, before the Thanksgiving holiday, a guidance was issued regarding safer holidays. The guidance still stands, but I just want to remind everyone that things continue to evolve as we continue our way into the winter season. So please keep in mind that the health officer statements and updates are all made available to the public. In the meantime, we continue with the recommendation to keep it safe, short, small, and stable to protect you, your family, and our community. Nonessential travel and holiday vacations are not recommended, and you should not travel if you're sick, if you're with someone who's sick, or if someone in your household is sick. If you travel for urgent matters, it is recommended that you self-quarantine for 14 days. Next, I have a few slides specific to San Bruno and our community, and I represent the Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team. I know firsthand how much has changed in our delivery of services as a city, so this is specific to our programming. But last week, we had a special honor to host Santa in our very own jingle around the block. Our firefighters took the opportunity to drive Santa around our community in the San Bruno Fire Truck, and the magic really brought out a lot of residents and smiling faces. And we thank Santa for that opportunity to help spread joy in our community. But I'm happy to deliver more good news about Santa. Our San Bruno elves continue to help him by helping with the Santa hotline and Santa letters. Our community services team has put together a program, this amongst many others, that you can find on our website at sanbruno.ca.gov. It allows your family to still enjoy the great services from home and celebrate the season. And another fun event is our new holiday light map here out in San Bruno. This is an opportunity to decorate your house to spread happiness, or request the map and take a ride around town to see all the special holiday decor. Either way, it's a safer way to celebrate the season from afar. Our public information team is finalizing a citywide mailer that will be out soon. This is a little bit of a teaser of the front page here, but it will include recreation and library programming for the upcoming season, as well as an update on the new Recreation and Aquatic Center project. Our city services, while most offices are closed, are still available by appointment or through remote connection, for example, like by phone or online. This is really a mailer that serves as a resource to our community to stay current on our activities during these modified times. And so stay tuned, that will be mailed out shortly. And lastly, we all encourage everyone to shop local, support our local businesses. They are really the heart of our community, and by supporting them, you can help save jobs and businesses. Many small businesses do not have an online presence, especially in San Bruno, so that doesn't mean that they are closed. It's important that you call ahead and find out business hours and vacation, and make a safe visit with a mask and socially distanced. And tonight, I have kept it short and sweet. That concludes my presentation. I do remind, I want to remind everyone to sign up for SMC Alert. It's our emergency notification, and to follow our official City Accounts on social media. I do want to take a second to thank all of my team members on the EOC Public Information Team. This year has been quite an experience for all of us, and I do appreciate everyone's hard work and dedication and amazing skills. On behalf of our team, we do wish everyone a warm, safe, and loving holiday season, and a big cheer for the new year. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Are there any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, always, just thank you so much for an excellent presentation. You're extremely thorough. One of the questions I've asked, and I've asked a few people, and I haven't really gotten on it, or an answer that I think anybody knows, but what's the difference between the ICU beds and ICU surge beds? Does anybody know? I was thinking it might have to do with surgical ICU beds, because that's a number I continue to monitor, and I think we, as a city and as a county, should really monitor. And when we start looking at numbers where we drop down to eight available ICU beds, that's getting pretty concerning. And so I hope those who are listening tonight really take this serious and stay away from groups and really the loved ones and family members. But if anybody has that answer, and we may not, and that's okay too, but we're definitely dropping down low.
Councilmember Davis, Javon Brogan, I'll answer that for you. So it's a good question, and we looked into that earlier this week. So ICU surge beds are additional ICU beds that can be tilted up and made available. And so the county does have additional ICU beds that are available and ready to serve this county. And one of the questions we had is when they do the ICU bed statistic on the county's website, are they actually including the surge bed capacity? We believe they are, because we sort of triangulated it earlier this week. And so there are available beds, ICU beds in the county when you include those surge beds.
Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda to item 4B. This is a presentation in recognition of outgoing council member Laura Davis. And again, it's very unique on Zoom, obviously, as we proceed further. So what I'm going to ask is if council members can turn their cameras off, with the exception of Councilmember Davis. Thank you. And what I'd like to do is call upon a few individuals that we have here. And first, I'd like from Jackie Spear's office to call on Katrina, and have the Zoom floor is yours.
Certainly. It's not Jackie Spear. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Medina, council members, staff. It's wonderful to be with here. We've been with you tonight, and I wish we could meet in person, as usual, but we can't. Laura, I am here on behalf of Congresswoman Spear to thank you for your service on the council, for the residents of San Bruno. And the Congresswoman entered extended remarks into the Congressional Record. I'm going to deliver this to you. We wanted to have it here on the video so that you could see it. The Congressional Record, of course, is the official history of Congress. So when your kids grow up and want to look you up in the Congressional Records, they will find this document. I'm not going to read the entirety of the document because it's too long, but please allow me to just read a few paragraphs of it. Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize Laura Davis, upon her retirement from the San Bruno City Council after three years of service. Serving on a council of a small city is never easy, but doing so during the global pandemic not seen in a century is almost unimaginable. Yet Laura and her colleagues used and created tools and mechanisms that made San Bruno residents as safe and supported as possible. Laura's hard work and dedication are a testament to her commitment to her community. Then it goes through several things that you have accomplished on the council. I'm going to jump ahead. Laura also isn't a newcomer to public service. Prior to the council, she served on the San Bruno Crime Prevention Committee and on Parks and Recreation Commission. She served on the committee that planned the spectacular Centennial celebrating the San Bruno in 2014, three years before she was elected to the council. An avid outdoors and sports enthusiast, she has coached numerous softball, basketball, and soccer teams in San Bruno. She founded Friends Helping Friends through San Robert Parish and raised $100,000 to help those in need of medical treatment with their expenses. After Laura survived her own battle with cancer, she served as a committee member of a Relay For Life fundraiser, and she organized a community superhero day for two boys fighting cancer. It is obvious from these activities that Laura Davis deeply cares about others and has a profound desire to improve their lives. Madam Speaker and members, please join me in honoring Laura Davis for her service to the San Bruno residents. We are very fortunate to have such a talented and caring woman as a community leader who will undoubtedly stay active and engaged. Thank you for your service, Laura.
Thank you so much, Katrina. That was very, very touching. I appreciate that, and thank you to Congressman Jackie Spear as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Katrina, thank the Congresswoman for all her work and effort and her representation of San Bruno. She's always been a friend to us, and we appreciate her service to what we do. And I know she's had a lot of work lately, so please pass on our love. Yes, our love, our best wishes for the holiday.
Very special relationship to the city of San Bruno, for sure. Thank you.
Truly, and thank you again for being here.
Of course, my pleasure. Thank you.
Next, we have, I've been delivered a certificate of recognition from the Honorable Kevin Mullen of the 22nd District, Speaker Pro Tem in Sacramento, and it is addressed to the Honorable Laura Davis, Councilmember, City of San Bruno, in honor and the recognition of your three years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of San Bruno. During your service on the council, you helped navigate through some challenging times, and your leadership laid a strong foundation for the future. On behalf of the State of California, congratulations and best wishes to continued success on this day, the 8th day of December 2020, signed by Mr. Mullen. this day, the 8th day of December 2020, signed by Mr. Mullen. And we will get that to you. So we have that. And then like I, I'd like to now call upon, we have the supervisor, David Canepa, who is the Vice President of the Board, and he is here to say some comments. Supervisor, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Now Laura, I heard you're a big Dodgers fan, is that right? No.
You heard that wrong. You heard that wrong.
I heard, I heard you're a big Giants fan, but I just want to, first of all, I'm just delighted to be here and thanks to the council and thanks, thank you to Mr. Mayor for all you do. But Laura, I was looking at some of the things that you've done in such a short time, but you were on a lot of regional committees in those three years. So just thank you for your service. Thank you just for all you do. It's not easy. It's not easy. And people think it is, but I remember when I was on the City Council at Daily City, you carry that responsibility with you and that, you know, sometimes those nights when you can't sleep, huh, Laura? So I'm sure your sleep is gonna get a lot better, but on behalf of Supervisor Pine, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors in small token, Laura appreciation, we're gonna present you with a resolution. All the best to you and your family, and thank you for your service. It's, it's much appreciated. Laura, enjoy tonight and enjoy retirement from the council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Canepa. Appreciate that. Supervisor.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate it, and thank you for your time, and have a good evening and happy holidays to you and your family. We also have from Dave Pine's office, Supervisor, 1st District, Dave Pine. We have Randy. Randy, please, and I do know that Supervisor Pine reached out to me and I believe reached out to Councilmember Davis as well, so I will turn it over to Randy, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Councilmember Davis, I just wanted to echo the words of Supervisor Canepa and let you know that I will personally mail the resolution from the County of San Mateo to you. Thank you again for your service, especially during this year of COVID, which has asked extraordinary levels of service from all officials. So again, thank you from San Mateo County.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate Dave Pine's support of the city as well as Supervisor Canepa.
Thank you, Randy. Now for the public, if there are those that wish to speak on this item, on the recognition of Laura Davis, now would be the time to please put up your virtual hand. And I do know that we have some people, and City Clerk, if you're able to bring in the former Vice Mayor and City Councilmember Ken Ibera first, if that's possible, and to bring him in. And again, Melissa will be timing the comments of three minutes and Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Ibera.
Three minutes? That's all I get? Thank you. Thank you very much, and I wanted to really make it a point that I was present tonight. First of all, let me congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Salazar for your reelection, and also congratulations and welcome to the dais to Councilmember Tom Hamilton. But for Laura Davis, it's bittersweet, but I, on behalf of the small group of former elected officials of San Bruno, we welcome you to the club. You have displayed so much to this community. I've known you before you were on, on the council, and your family has been so involved in this community, and it's been a joy to know you and be your friend. And especially three years ago, when I, when I came off the council only to learn that you were, you were gonna take the place up on the dais on the council, and so I was so pleased and honored to support you and see you involved. Laura, you've done so much for this community. Three years is, is enough for you because, you know, you've done so much more before and look forward to what your next venture is, because I'm, I'm sure the residents of San Bruno will benefit to you. Best to you, the family, hi to mom, and thanks again on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Ken. Next speaker, please.
Ken.
Next, we have Jessica Martinucci. Just one moment while I bring you in. Hello. Hi, Jessica, can you hear us? There you go.
I, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Perfect. I just want to congratulate Laura for all she's done and a huge thank you. She obviously is one of my closest friends, but I have also served with her, doing things for the community, and I know her love for this city. And I know that she's going to also continue to do great things and serve her city from a different seat, but I just want to say as a friend and someone that cares and loves, loves her, thank you from the bottom of my heart for serving. I know it's not easy, and you've always done it well, so thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Chris Gonzalez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and councilmembers and Laura. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as your treasurer. Thank you for having the faith in me that allowed me to be a small part of your campaign team. I cherish the extra time spent together these last few years and our many years of friendship. You have put your heart and soul into last three years that you served this community, not only as a San Bruno councilwoman, but on many subcommittees and boards. You truly represent the city with a heart. I want to thank you for being a leader with character and kindness while representing those of us in this great city of San Bruno that vote with their pen and not with misleading social media posts. You are our voice. The loudest people do not speak for all of us, and you recognize that and stayed true to you. It is now time for you to take some time for your family. You can enjoy it knowing that you served your city and you served it well. In the words of the late Ruth Bader Ginsburg, cannot rain more true than when I think of you. Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. Thank you again, Laura.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you for your comments. City Clerk, I think we've gone through.
Yes, I believe we have.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to call upon some council members, and if I could start with Councilmember Medina, and I'm gonna fade away.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Laura. I want to sincerely thank you and your, and your family for your dedicated service to our city. It takes a lot to be on the council, and I know you deeply care about our city, and it was even harder in this past pandemic year. So thank you, enjoyed the time away, wishing you and your family the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you so much, Marty.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Laura, we've known each other for quite some time, going back to our church. I know you were, I mean, you're practically legendary at St. Roberts, everything you've been involved in, all your involvement in the festival and all your involvement in youth sports around the city. And then, you know, when I got to Cappuccino, our paths crossed again because of all of your time and talents that you dedicated to, to that environment. And then, and then we spent some time on the, on the Park and Rec Commission together. And, you know, again, it just, over all those experiences, it just helped to increase the, the level of respect I have for you and admiration. You're such a strong person, a great leader, and, you know, you know, what can I say? You've been fantastic. I think anyone who knows you knows, you know, how tough you are, how determined you are, what a hard worker you are. And I think what really shines through all of those things, though, is how big of a heart you have and how much affection you have for our community, and that really comes through in everything that you do. And, you know, we, we, you know, walked onto the dais in 2017 together, both of us from the Park and Rec Commission. And, you know, when, when you got elected, I knew you were gonna be great on the council. I knew it. But honestly, I could not have asked for a better colleague over these past three years. Time and time again, I could always count on you to show up prepared, informed, and ready to be a leader. And, you know, I for one am gonna definitely miss your, your partnership on the council. I'm gonna miss the collaboration and all of the energy and positive, the positive energy that you brought to the council. So thank you so much for being there when we needed you, and I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Now for, for myself, I will tell you that we've known each other since being recreation leaders at San Bruno Parks and Rec, let me say, many moons ago. One thing was, is it wasn't, no fear of rolling up the sleeve, no fear of taking on something, trying something new and saying, we'll find a way, and then making that happen. That happened even at, at Cappuccino with the fundraiser for Stephanie Harvgro, needing a bone marrow transplant, and it wasn't covered by insurance back then, and the leadership class and the, the school community came together to raise monies. And being on Crime Prevention Committee together at a period of time, so very much, you've always given and contributed in many ways. And even when you had your own challenge, I still saw the strength and the passion. And not only are you a fighter, but you're a survivor. And and during that time, many people would turn away or shelter or not have folks over, but you opened up your home, opened up your heart, still to people, as you battled your situation and never forgot. And I still, I don't wear the shirt, probably because I don't fit in it anymore, but I still have this shirt back from March 22nd, 2014, and it's San Bruno's Littlest Superheroes. It was for Batman and Harry Potter, two young children that were battling cancer, and yet you came up with this idea, seeing it in LA or somewhere, and brought a community together to have skits, have the Cappuccino baseball team involved, have the senior center involved, have this, the police involved, and it was something very special to see a community come together. And I think that's what you've always done, and that's what you do well. And I know darn well that you don't need to sit on the council in order to still be engaged. One of those things that I was criticized for, and maybe you unfortunately, was, my God, those two know each other too well, they're never going to be able to separate. Well, I will say in these last three years has probably been the most challenging for you and I personally. And I don't look forward to not having you on the council and your wisdom and your passion and your love, but I do look forward to us, again, having a, a great relationship because as you and I both know, we are passionate people, we speak our mind candidly and frankly, and sometimes too much, and we do not always agree. So for those that thought there could not be separation, there truly was at times and in more ways than one, but I can't speak more highly of an individual that gives of their time, that runs for office, and even at a time when you were not going to seek reelection, you still gave a commitment and a love and a passion for the city. You are truly one who has a city with a heart, and you have always, from as long as I've known you, and so I'm appreciative and I'm thankful for all that you have done and all that you will continue to do. And I know if we need a volunteer for some project, we just gotta pick up the phone. So I know that. I, I did just see a hand go up. I'm gonna call on this one, one person from the community, but this is gonna be it, and then I'll, I'll finish it up and we'll move on. May I please, City Clerk, can you call on Mrs. Allen?
Yes. Anna Allen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Laura, 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 Laura. Thank you, thank you so much for everything you've done for the community. On a personal level, I've known you since baseball, when our sons were five years old, and the how you, you raised these boys and anybody you coached, honestly, like they were your own children and treated them as such. And I, I'm sure there are many of us that are grateful for, for that. It's so needed in this community or in any community, and you just shine with kindness and love and sincerity. And I am really, really grateful for all you've done for my family, for the city, and for any other, you know, community that you've helped, which I'm sure you've done. I also want to thank your family. I'm sure that, you know, there were nights when you were away and, you know, they kind of carried on with, you know, maybe Jim at work as well, but it just shows the strength of your family and how you raised them, which is, you know, incredible. You've, you've got an incredible family. You, you are just rooted here in this beautiful community, and, you know, I can't thank you enough, and I just wanted to express that. And the reason I'm raising my hand now is I couldn't get on, I wasn't signed in correctly. So I apologize for doing that or coming on so late. But again, thank you and, and your family.
Thank you so much, Anna.
And, and very well said, Mrs. Allen, that it should be acknowledged to, you know, Jim's the nice, quiet one, and he probably has to deal with it, and so better him than me. But, but at the same time, to Ryan and Sarah and Jim, much thanks, and to the rest of the family who has, you know, I think you've had, even when you go on vacation, you're still on duty, so I appreciate that. What, what Mr. Davis delivered was a flower arrangement from us, and when I say us, the city council, from the city staff and from the city of San Bruno. And also in the box is a token of our appreciation and gift from, again, council, staff, and the community. And again, we thank you, and we are sincerely appreciative for the years of service and the, I think nearly, if I counted 50 meetings we've had this year or more. So with that, I will turn over to you, Councilmember Davis, for comments.
I, I'm not, you know me, I'm not someone who has, who's lost, gets, lost for words, but just spilled water from the flowers on me. Those were very, very, very nice comments for those of you who spoke up. I do really appreciate all that that I heard tonight. You had me in tears, actually. You know, when I committed to run for city council three years ago, I had no idea what was ahead of me. Sure, I attended council meetings and followed city issues and spent 11 years in the Park and Rec Commission and few years on the citizens' crime prevention back in my early twenties. But the experience these past few years has been very rewarding, challenging, and very emotional. You see, I, when I get involved in something, I give 110%. I really do care about things. I care about the decisions I make and fully understand how my vote affects the residents of San Bruno, their businesses, and even down to city employees. I take the comments and the feedback to heart. You know, my family, and I thank my father who taught me how to get involved and make a difference, very involved businessman in San Bruno, and he taught me how to work together as a team. He would, we would buy in bulk and sell to the businesses on San Mateo Avenue so they can then purchase items at a cheaper, a cheaper price. And so he, he worked with his other merchants and fought on getting more parking because at the end of the day, we knew that parking was the most important thing to survive as a business. I continue to give back and I continue to appreciate the importance of making San Bruno better. I've seen good and I've seen bad, but I've never lost the faith in the city and the promises for the future. You know, I remember back the night of the San Bruno gas explosion, and I was there within, my husband and I were there within minutes. my husband and I were there within minutes of that night. And many people don't know this, but we actually came up upon a gentleman who had ran from the bottom of the hill for his life to the top of the hill. My husband is a firefighter, a paramedic, grabbed him right away. And that was Mr. Franco. And we were there before the fire department, and I started directing traffic, because there are a bunch of idiots who thought that just blocking the streets and taking photos was what they needed to do instead of letting the fire department in. And at that time, I thought, "Oh, my God, you know, the people of San Bruno, and there are so many friends and loved ones that live down in that community and that were affected by that." You know, knowing who's there and knowing who survived, and then the rebuilding part of it. And I think back to how much that the city got involved with in trying to rebuild that community, and, you know, so many opinions and decisions, and, you know, "What can we do? And how do we give back to the community? And how do we make sure that they feel the love?" And in fairness, that time, you know, really took a lot away from the city of San Bruno. You know, we could barely just stay abreast of what we needed to get done. And so, in some areas, we are behind the times, and in some areas, you know, there are things that other cities have done. And so, when I get questioned about stuff, I think about, you know, our city and how effective we were, and that, at the end of the day, the staff has worked really hard, tirelessly, many hours, to work hard for San Bruno and make a difference, and really, and choose the right path to follow, and the right things that are important. And we, as a council, do that as well. You know, we are a dedicated council, and we all come with different backgrounds and opinions and priorities. You know, I remember, in fact, I remember Mayor Medina running for council and, you know, thinking how the importance of newspaper racks on Samatow Avenue. And then you get onto the council, and you realize you've got about 1,000 things that are just as important, or more important, 1,000 things that are more reaching to your community, because you can only do so much. I've learned in my career that, you know, you can't tackle it all. You know, you prioritize your list, and you start addressing each one of your items at the very top, and you complete it fully, and fully and succinctly. You know, we, as a city, have had to focus on many different things, but we've had the opportunity, and I've had the opportunity, to work with amazing and dedicated leaders, from our city managers to city attorney and many department heads. I'm so constantly impressed by their dedication and their commitment to San Bruno. You know, you really, truly never understand the position that we take and the council, as Superager Canopus said, "Sleepless nights," and that's a true statement. You know, we have legalities and issues that we can't share. We have legal issues that force us to make decisions we know residents do not support. Nobody cares for rate increase, but we understand the importance of those, and yet, we are all members paying my water bill as well. We know the importance of the big picture and the cost to replace infrastructure. We do have, I do, I'm sure I can vouch for the most of the council members, the sleepless nights. You know, a council meeting ends at midnight, and you're still there, wide awake at 2:00 AM with an 8:00 AM presentation the next morning to a VP. And that's not uncommon for me. And so, it's challenging. You know, we spend weekends preparing for council meetings. You know, you've got a 300, 500-page packet, you've got to go through it, and you've got to ask a question, you've got to do the research. So, we all give back, and we are all dedicated. And what's hard as a councilperson is that you've got to then read the social media and try to stay on top of that. And when you read the social media, you see the comments that really aren't based on facts or based on hearsay or based on oppression. But what I also understand, it's extremely challenging for the average resident to really understand, because there is so much coming at us. And so, you know, it's, I was told at the very beginning, as a councilmember, you're probably better off staying off social media. There are times when it's so hurtful, you need to, and you come back around and you, you know, try to stay abreast of it, and you want to know what the issues are, and you want to make sure that you can hear the things that are happening and make sure we can bring them forward. So, I always appreciate those who call in or maybe send an email, and just really succinctly give their support and understanding, and ask us in a nice way to try to address something or focus on an area that maybe we're not seeing. And it's always amazing to get the email responses back from a resident who appreciates what you've done, the visit that you've had at their home, and that you follow through with staff and try to escalate their issues, so that they felt like they were heard, or that we can help resolve an issue. And so, to all my councilmembers, I know we care about San Bruno. We all want what's better, we want San Bruno to be better tomorrow than it is today. Every council, like I said, brings your own experience and knowledge. Our priorities might be different, but hopefully, we can all come together and really agree in those top priorities. And so, as a team, I know that this council can continue working together, and I think Tom Hamilton, soon-to-be councilmember Hamilton, said it best in one of our council meetings, that we're all probably there, about 90%, we agree on everything. And it's that 10% that we get stuck in the weeds, and it really kind of can separate us. So, I hope that, you know, we can really focus on the 90% that we all agree upon and know that those are the things that we should, to do, to work together to make San Bruno better. As Councilmember Medina will say, he likes to see all of us get to a 5-0 vote, and I appreciate him trying to always work together as a team, and so, thank you for that. Councilmember Salazar, it's been a pleasure working with you. You are someone that is sometimes the quiet one, but just those quiet ones that are listening intently, and your collaboration with you on many different items has been so supportive. Mayor Medina, we do butt heads, and, you know, I have strong opinions, and I will be honest. We may not always agree, and at times, we do agree. And so, it will be interesting to move forward with not having these battles, that we don't have to sit and get frustrated with each other. You have passion, and I have passion, and so, sometimes, it's a difference of opinions, but that's okay. And Councilmember Mason, I hope to see your success on this council, and I will say that the best success will be really working together as a team. And I believe that COVID really hindered the relationship with the council this year. You know, I think back to the last three years, and, you know, the council city dinners and the together, you know, just showing up on-site, we missed all that. We didn't have that opportunity really this year. And so, I think that that creates just distance between everybody. And so, for any part of my frustration in you or your frustration with me, I apologize, but I know that, at the end of it, every single one of these councilmembers do care. So, team, there's a lot to be proud of. We've had very challenging times this past year. For me personally, I cannot give 110% when I'm so committed to a career and my family, my husband who recently retired, and for my own health. And people have said, "Your own health." I am so into this, and I care, and I simply care about it. And so, with that, I have to step back, because I just can't give, you know, nine, 10 hours to a career and then try to turn around and do, you know, another 50 hours a week with the city council, and really be fair to the residents of San Bruno. It takes a lot to be a councilperson. I don't know how anybody does it with a full-time job. And so, be able to have a life again and be able to enjoy more of my family time would be so amazing. But I won't give up, and I won't not volunteer, and I won't not give back to this community. It's what I've done for the past 30-plus years, and I will always try to support and get involved in good causes. So, to Javon, thank you so much. As a city manager, you have been a tremendous leader, and your dedication is just, your passion, and you lead an amazing team. And I know behind every great team is that assistant, Jennifer Dionis, who's always there and somebody I can depend on, and I appreciate the support that you've given, because I know there's so much that you do behind the scenes. To Mark DeVrono, city attorney, thank you for your advice and knowledge. You're truly the best, and you've never led us in the wrong direction. And to all the department heads, I know that you are so dedicated, you know, long days, long hours, and you are one for the best for San Bruno, and you have to listen to our questions and our re-questioning and repeated issues, and each of us, each of us personal things we get involved with. But I thank you for the reports and your dedication to all of our quirks that we have. Thank you to my dedicated campaign team, from Chris Gonzalez to Jessica, Christina with a C, Christina with a K, most importantly, my sister and her family. You guys are my rock. I love you so much. And to my family, and then I'm going to ask my son, my daughter, my husband to come over here and get into the camera. My family is really my rock. My husband has totally supported me through such a difficult time. My kids are following social media, and they're trying to support me. And I, you know, I go from work to a council meeting with five minutes to put some food into my mouth, and my husband's got the dinners prepared for me. So, they have been there behind me, my son Ryan, my husband Jim, my daughter Sarah, and my son's girlfriend Vanessa, who's Kanaki, is going to hide off-camera, but they're my rock. And my mom, who likes to join in and watch the meetings and listen to me, thank you from the bottom of my heart. We are very blessed, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. If I can ask all of the councilmembers to come back and turn their cameras on, please?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And again, thank you, councilmember, and we're not going to adjourn yet. We're going to actually conduct some business now. So, let's move on to item number five, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented by earlier council action and/or may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Are there any items that my colleagues want to pull for a separate vote? Not seen any? How about any that we want to have some additional questions or commentary on? Councilmember Mason?
The ransomware item, and the grand jury, and then the hotel item.
Okay, can you identify it by letter, please?
Yeah, give me one second. I've got to scroll back up. So, five, C, the minutes.
Got it.
Five D.
Got it.
The Samatow County Civil Grand Jury. And then F, the declaring property owned by the city of San Bruno.
Thank you. Anyone else for council? Okay, let's start taking, thank you, let's start taking those on one by one. First, we're going to go to item C, approve the regular meeting minutes for the meeting of November 24, 2020. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make sure that the minute reflects the question that was asked in regards to the ABC article with the police department, that one is the information accurate, and then if not, that we request a redaction. I've already spoken with the clerk, and the clerk is making those changes. I just want to make sure that it's clear that those changes will be made. She did go back and listen to the recording to ensure that it's accurate. So, that's it for me for the minute.
Okay, just for clarity, so, I understand you made those comments in regards to something that was done in 2018, so your notation of the minutes is to have that noted, but you're also saying then you want it retracted, and then, so, it sounds like we're giving directions to staff through the minutes? Or how are you interpreting this?
So, that we should look into retraction if it's not accurate. So, I can, the clerk might want to speak to it, because I've spoken with her and the city manager. The minutes, the way they're written right now, it's just too broad, and there was going to be a correction. So, I'd be happy to call her or call on Melissa as well.
Because I know on, I'm sorry, go ahead, City Clerk?
Yes, this is Melissa Therman, City Clerk. There was a request by Councilmember Mason to add additional language to her comments under "Council Comments" at the last meeting. The minutes that were presented to council in the packet say, "Linda Mason spoke regarding a news article regarding biases in relation to enforcement of curfew violations, and Councilmember Mason also spoke with social media sites with holiday themes," and she wanted more detail added on to that. And the city manager reviewed the video, and the suggested language to change to is, "Linda Mason spoke regarding a news article that alleged potential biases in relation to police arrests. Councilmember Mason asked that the matter be looked into, and if the numbers are accurate, the city should state how we are addressing it. If not, we should request a retraction." She then wished everyone a safe holiday.
No, thank you for the safe holiday. So, I just want to make clear, because minutes to me are a, and please correct me, but minutes are taken by the minute taker on the interpretation of what's stated. And I forget, I honestly, you know, where it was at on the agenda, but it's not an action. And I think, because each one of us can have something stated in the minutes, modify it, and we're expecting staff to have action, I don't want to give that false expectation. I know on the 2018 report, you know, I know sometimes, too, we bring things up, and I always would hope that staff gets a heads-up to it, so that maybe we can respond, because I know I got two phone calls saying, "What was that about? And why didn't somebody say something?"
So, Mayor Medina's staff was informed. I did, I informed the chief, and I also informed the city manager ahead of time. They're both on the call. And I also understand what you're saying in regards to the minutes, but I believe that that's a conversation we're having around the city council processes. I did read that the minutes are part of a discussion we'll eventually have, and how we want those minutes written, how descriptive we want them written. But I do believe that the minutes in this particular area at this time in our country's history, our local history, do need to reflect what, you know, that the city does take these actions seriously, and when something like this comes to the attention of the city council, we can't sit by and just say, "Okay, this was an article that came out, and we're not going to address it." We have been proactive. We've initiated as a council a third-party audit that's going to be starting soon, and this is part of that entire conversation. And to leave that entire section out of minutes, I think, doesn't do justice to what we, as a council, have been trying to do, and what our chief has been trying to do, which is really frame the conversation around what is happening in San Bruno with the police department with bias, and if there are any issues, how we're addressing them.
Okay, now, I can appreciate that, and I appreciate that you had given them a heads-up, because the way I heard you articulate it was, "If it's not accurate." Based on an email that we received, it is not accurate, and then I'm sure staff had already said that to you, and in your commentary, I didn't get that impression, that it was an "if." And our chief has basically said, "It is not correct." So, you could have shared that at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'd have to refer to the attorney, if we want to have a whole discussion now, because I think we're going into an entire discussion around, you know, what was said via email that the public hasn't seen and what wasn't said. I don't believe that the email said whether it was accurate or not, it actually gave other hypotheticals that would be similar. But I want to just go back to the minutes. If the council doesn't want to accept the amended minutes, we can vote on them. But I do think that this topic is very important. I believe that we're addressing it, and I believe the minute should reflect closer to what was said than a very broad statement.
Thank you for your explanation and bringing that forward, and yes, I support them then and now. Why don't we move on, unless there's any other comments on item C, the D, and that's approve the city of San Bruno response letter to the Samatow County Civil Grand Jury report titled "Ransomware: It Is Not Enough to Think You Are Protected."
Yeah, so, on page two of the item, the city's response, I just want to make sure that we are approving the item as it is. I noticed that numbers one and two were not answered in the response by the city, and I wasn't sure if that was just, if that was just an oversight or not.
City manager, do we have somebody that can respond? City manager or city attorney?
Counsel Javon Drogon, city manager, just looking at that section of the report. Now, those recommendations have been implemented as of November 30, 2020. What the councilmember is pointing out is, under R1, the response is actually listed at the top of page three of three, and that response is a response to R.1.1, R.1.2, and R.1.3. And so, that response is for all of those subtitles. So, it is there, the response is correct. It's probably just a pagination that throws off- It's probably just a pagination that throws off the interpretation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on, unless there's anything from council, let's move on to item F. Adopt resolution declaring property owned by the city of San Bruno in the Crossing Development on Admiral Court as surplus land. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, so this has been a, I mean, this property has gone kind of to a hotel deal, then not a hotel deal, then a hotel deal, then now not a hotel deal again. So instead of putting it on consent, this has been such a public discussion around this land and this piece of land. And so tonight's, tonight's agenda item is really just to designate it surplus. And I didn't know if the city manager or any of the other city council wanted to say anything. I just want to make sure the public is aware that we are not approving a sale of the property. What we're doing is we're just establishing it as surplus.
City manager, did you want to say anything?
Again, Javon Grogan, city manager, council member Mason, you are correct. The title of the report is adopt a resolution declaring the property owned by the city of San Bruno in the Crossing Development on Admiral Court as surplus land. That is the action that the city council has taken. There is, is proposed to be taken. There is no action tonight to sell the property. Declaring it surplus is in compliance with state law, and it is a step before the property can be sold. And so the action tonight will set about that process, where the property, if council says yes, will be declared surplus. There is a 60-day period where it must be offered to affordable housing developers, and then a 90-day period after that, if anyone raises their hands. And so we will, of course, comply with the state law. But as the community and the council knows, this property is formerly owned by the redevelopment agency and was purchased by the city as an economic development initiative, initially entitled as a hotel. There is a very long history behind potential hotel sales that currently are not active due to the COVID-19 economic downturn. And so the city is looking at other options. And the city council will have closed sessions to discuss those options. And of course, we will have public reports and a public presentation of any of the results that come out of those closed sessions to transact this property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city manager Grogan, for that response. Because this, this has been ongoing for a number of years. And I do, I do also, I'm interested in hearing more than it being on consent. And I understand that there's plenty of discussion that will be coming forward. I wanted to note that in the discussion in page two of this report that mentions the city recently received an offer for the purchase of a site as an audible bill dealership. So there are plenty of discussions ahead.
Okay, I see no other hands or comments. And we just went over items C, D, and F. On consent, we have A through F. Is there action to approve?
As amended, with a minute as amended.
Well, we'll see what the motion is.
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, councilmember. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. City clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Okay, now we are on to item six, conductive business. And city clerk, if we can go to the first one, please?
Item 6A, approval of resolution approving amended city investment policy.
Okay, we are going to, thank you. Going to turn this over to the city manager to begin, and he may be bringing in Mr. Steele afterwards. City manager?
Members of the city council and the public, Javon Grogan, city manager, our presentation tonight will be provided by Jim Steele, who is a consultant supporting our finance department. And so Jim, if you'll raise your camera up just a little bit as you get set. We have a PowerPoint presentation, and this is an investment policy report. And Jim, I need you to raise your camera up a little higher so we can see your face. There we go, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
And so Jim has been.
I'm just pulling up my PowerPoint. And.
All right, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jim, and he will provide the background and launch into the PowerPoint. And I will be here to answer questions. As the city council knows, I'm the city manager, but also as we are recruiting for.
Hi, Jim, I'm moving to the other room.
Also the acting finance director. So Jim, why don't you take it away?
Can you all see the PowerPoint on your screen?
No, Jim, we don't. Will you?
It says I'm, it says I'm screen sharing.
Okay, but under display settings, click display settings. It's right at the top of your screen. It says show taskbar, then display settings. Over to the left a little bit, to the left. There's a drop-down menu right at the top of your screen. Okay, now click duplicate slideshow. All right, we're ready.
Do you see it?
Take it away, yes.
Okay, and I trust you can hear me as well. So my name is Jim Steele. I'm a financial consultant with Management Partners. Prior to working there, I've been there about three and a half years. I was, I worked for city government for about 30 years. 15 of those years, my last 15 years was with the city of South San Francisco. I started out as finance director and then ended my career as assistant city manager. So I'm pleased to help Javon and your city right now while you're searching for a new finance director. So I'm going to move through the slides, and then we'll have time for questions. What you have before you is the annual investment policy report. It makes sense from time to time for the city council to review the current investment policy and make changes as needed. And with your approval, you'd be adopting a resolution to approve those changes to the city's investment policy. Cities are constrained, thankfully, in what they can and can't invest in. We don't want to have taxpayer money being invested in risky endeavors. So that's all governed in the California government code. And there's three principal or primary objectives for managing public sector funds. Primarily and the most important is safeguarding principle, not to lose money. Second is meeting liquidity so that bills can be paid in a timely manner. And third, only after those first two objectives have been met is achieving a rate of return, earning interest on those investments. The city's investment policy complies with the state code. It allows for allowable investments that the city can invest in. It protects principal dollars through safe investments and diversification. And it generates the maximum amount of income that's consistent with those eligible investments while meeting the cash flow demands. Just want to introduce three or four key concepts that I'll be talking a little bit more about. And these are also referred to in the staff report. And we all know US Treasury bonds, those are the gold standard, the safest instruments in the world. They're backed by the full faith and credit of the US government. There's no restrictions on US Treasury bonds in the city's investment policy. And that's consistent across all cities in California. Second, US government agency issued bonds. Those are just a notch less gold standard E, if you will, than Treasury bonds, only because they don't carry the full faith and credit of the government. But the full faith and credit is implied. And no US government agency has ever gone bankrupt or defaulted on obligations. So these are almost as good as US Treasury bonds. Local Agency Investment Fund, LEAF. The state runs an investment pool that offers local agencies the opportunity to participate in a pool of investments using investment expertise of the state treasurer's office. And there's no cost to taxpayers there. And these funds are completely, excuse me, these funds are completely separated from the state's funds. Each city has its share. The state can't touch the money, and they're absolutely protected. These are very safe investments, and they're typically relatively short-term, six months to 12 months in duration. So those are also a really good investment source. Each county in California has its own investment pool. They collect property taxes, and they keep money for school districts. They also invest money on behalf of any cities that want to invest with them. So we have the San Mateo County Investment Pool here. Also in the policy, we'll be discussing money market funds. Those are extremely short-term, very short-term instruments that are AAA rated. And they're always designed to maintain their principal value. An example of that would be a pool of overnight bank reserves that are pooled together and sold on the overnight money market. So very short-term, very liquid, very safe, and highly rated. And I believe the last concept I wanted to talk about is a laddered portfolio. So typically, once a city, and a bigger city can do this, and San Bruno does have sufficient cash in its portfolio to have a laddered portfolio. Once it has a target duration for its investments, you know, usually a time horizon of two to three years, it will go out and invest in new securities as it gets new cash out to the maximum amount of that ladder. So let's say San Bruno's target duration is two years. If all of a sudden one of its older investments matured, and it was for $2 million, typically a city would go out and reinvest that $2 million full out to the two years in its portfolio. And what that does is the longer-term investments earn more. And by diversifying, you're always guaranteeing that you have cash flow coming due. And there's diversification over time as interest rates change. So you're not all invested in one, one type of instrument all at once. So the strategies that we wish the council to consider are increasing the amount that the city can invest in LEAF. Again, that's the state pool. It's extremely safe. And right now, it's particularly attractive because its interest rates are more favorable than US Treasuries or US agencies. We all know that inflation and the bond market is at, I guess the bond market is at an all-time high in a certain way. So interest rates are very, very low. So LEAF becomes an attractive alternative to US Treasuries and US agencies. We also want council to consider in the future, options to go with other public sector investment pools. One, for example, is CalTrust. It's a joint powers authority, and it has over 140 participating agencies. At this time, we're not suggesting that San Bruno join that, but we'd like to at least put that concept in the investment policy. With council approval, what we would envision is, in the future, a future finance director might want to join CalTrust or another, and would bring that to the council specifically for approval to invest there. So that gets us to the policy changes that we're asking tonight. We would like to increase LEAF. The maximum now is at 30 years, 30%, sorry. And we'd like to increase it to the state limit. The state currently has a limit of 65 million. It's very common for cities to allow LEAF to be invested in maximum. It's a little bit unusual that the city would invest only 30%, but that's been the practice here. And we recommend that you extend it to the, to the maximum. I think that's consistent with other cities in the county, I believe, San Mateo and Redwood City both. Second, to minimize risk, we recommend that holdings in the San Mateo County pool be reduced from the current maximum of 50% of the portfolio down to 20%. And this is primarily because the county does hold certain medium to longer-term bonds that are slightly lower in investment grade. And while they haven't lost money recently, we think it's just prudent to reduce your exposure there and increase it in other vehicles that are more, a little bit less risky. And then finally, and I mentioned the ability at a future time to invest in other public sector investment pools. Finally, to add to your policy to allow AAA-rated money market funds. So with that, I'd like to close and happy to answer questions. And we are asking you to adopt a resolution approving the amended city investment policy, which is redlined in your packet so you can see the changes that are proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Steele, if you could unshare your screen? And any questions or comments from my colleagues?
To the chair.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Thank you. Just one question. So I would think that we would want our policy to be rigid enough where we are offering some protections against, you know, not enough diversification or too much concentration in one pool. But at the same time, I would think that we would want to avoid being so rigid that then we lock ourselves into something that maybe, you know, could put us at a disadvantage at some point down the road. So in reducing our ability to invest in the county pool, should that pool, you know, over time become more attractive for whatever reason, whether because of the returns it's seeing or because they remove some of the riskier portions of it, and then we're now locked into a 20% limit on that, wouldn't we want some flexibility in being able to go a little higher in that, in that pool?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. That's a great question, and that is a very reasonable approach. I guess what I would say is, the county only allows cities to pull out 12.5% of its holdings per month. It will take months before the city gets down to 20%. The city at any time, if it, if it changes its mind, can come back to council and recommend that you reinstate a higher percentage. And the city also can go to other investment pools as a key reason why we recommended the option for other JPA pools to be available.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To the mayor, if I, if I can. Sure, I just want to elaborate on that a little bit. So our policy currently limits us to 50% of our investment portfolio in the county pool. Other cities in the county have lower rates. For example, as noted in the report, the city of San Mateo limits their portfolio to 30%. Redwood City limits their portfolio to 50 million or the equivalent of 18% of their portfolio. And South City does not allow any investment in the county pool. In addition, it's worth noting that during the 2008 financial collapse of Lehman Brothers, the county pool and a number of agencies lost significant money. Just to the city of San Bruno, we lost 1.46 million in that Lehman Brothers deal with the money we had invested in the county pool. And so that's part of the rationale for just being a little bit more strict on what we invest in the county pool, knowing that we can always up it. But we feel it's the most prudent step to take at this time, and it will align us to where other cities are in the county.
Any other questions from colleagues? Any other questions from colleagues? Councilwoman Mason.
Hi. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Medina. I just wanted to thank city manager Grogan and Jim Steele because this is going to just put us in a more stable financial footing and I really appreciate the report. I did just have one question. If the, if this policy change is approved tonight, will, is there any projections on how much could potentially be generated that we may not be generating now because of existing policy?
There isn't, councilwoman, and as you, as you know, interest rates are at a very historic low right now.
Yeah.
So, and our goal right now isn't so much to earn more because even if we did earn more, it would be fairly modest with rates being where they are. Rather, it's to position you so that as interest rates do start to rise, you'll have money in LEAF, sufficient liquid funds to go out and invest in that ladder that I talked about earlier, which will allow you over time to earn more because you'll be putting more funds at a longer maturity once interest rates start rising. And we don't know at this point when that will be. No one really knows that.
And, and also will there, if there should be more of a downturn in the economy given COVID and what expectations may be next year, is this going to protect us more than what we currently have?
I would say yes, because you're, you have so much liquid cash right now when revenues are so uncertain, that's not a bad position to be in. So if you need cash, it's, it's readily available. And your investments are very safe.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions from colleagues? And I would just say, I would just say, you know, this is, so folks know, this is annually done. It used to be done by our city treasurer when we had an elected treasurer, would come forward every year to modify and to go through these. And obviously, as that was phased out, it became to the finance director, in this case, Mr. Steele for now. So this is a annual normal occurrence that, that we review, look at the market, get recommendations and take action. So with not seeing any more questions, seeing no hands up from the audience, the attendees or residents, I'm going to ask, it is a resolution, is there any action?
I move we approve the resolution.
I second.
Motion made in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to the next item under Conduct of Business, item B, please.
Adopt a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election for the city of San Bruno held on November 3rd, 2020 as provided by law.
City clerk.
On November 3rd, 2020, there was a election held. It was a presidential election and in the city of San Bruno, we had two council seats open as well as one mayoral seat. The council seats were for a four-year term and the mayor's seat was for a two-year term. We also had two ballot measures. And one of those ballot measures was Measure S, which was a cannabis business tax. And then we also had Measure X, which was a transit occupancy hotel tax measure. The results of the elections that were held was Tom Hamilton is our newly elected council member and Michael Salazar is our re-elected council member to serve four-year terms. For the office of mayor, Rico E. Medina won the seat for mayor and he will serve a two-year term. Measure S and Measure X were both adopted and approved during the election. And what is before you today is a resolution from Mark Church, who is the registrar of voters for San Mateo County Elections Division and certifying the results of the election with the official votes.
Thank you, city clerk. If there's anybody from the public, please do the virtual hand and as we do that, I'll ask the city council if there's any questions. Seeing no questions from council and seeing no one from the public, this is an action item and a resolution. Is there any action from?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to item C.
Item 6C, swearing in of re-elected mayor Rico E. Medina, newly elected council member Tom Hamilton and re-elected council member Michael Salazar. This is where I will do the oath of office to those that are, I'm sorry, mayor, did you have something? Okay. This is where I will perform the oath of office and we will begin with our incumbent, Michael Salazar, who's been re-elected to the city council. Vice Mayor Salazar, if I could have you raise your right hand.
And, and hold on, city clerk. And councilmembers, if I can have all of us now turn off our cameras and so it'll be the clerk and the vice mayor for the oath. Thank you.
If I could have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to unmute you because it looks like you're muted there. There you go. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Salazar.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Salazar. And any comments from you, sir, would be appropriated this time and the Zoom, the Zoom call is yours.
The Zoom call is mine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I just wanted to start by thanking everyone who's watching tonight, whether it's via Zoom or YouTube or CityNet Channel 1. Thank you all for, for joining us tonight. It's really hard to believe that it's been three years since the last installation I was in. The time really flew by and especially this past year, it just seems like a blur. The last installation was at Cappuccino High School. As, as some may remember, our normal venue was under repair at the time. And, you know, that, for that installation, we had the privilege of having the, the Cappuccino band and the choir there to help us celebrate. And so it was definitely a unique and momentous celebration for us. This year will be unique and memorable for other reasons, namely that it's being hosted in everyone's living room over Zoom. And, you know, then last year, or, you know, back in 2017, few people had even heard of Zoom and now it's become virtually part of everything that we do. And COVID-19 in general has really changed a lot of what we do and how we operate. Yet, you know, here we are again, you know, moving forward, we're adapting and we're making the best of the situation. So looking back at the past few months, you know, I was thinking about how hard it is to get elected in, in a normal year. 2020 wasn't anything but a normal year. We had a very contentious national election and it also just happened to be the first time that our city council race was held in the same year as a presidential election. So it meant that it was a much larger turnout that we had to factor for and unfortunately, a little bit of voter burnout on, on top of that. And as, as things would, would have it, you know, it turned out to be the least of our troubles because we were also facing a pandemic along with a recession, wildfires, bad air quality days, record-breaking temperatures through most of the campaign season. And so it really wasn't an ideal year. And I had made a decision early on that I wouldn't risk anyone's health for the sake of the campaign and so it really limited my activities. And I was also very hesitant to ask anyone to, to help out with the usual campaign activities. But as it turns out, I, I didn't need to ask. I, I'm so grateful for the amazing group of friends and supporters that have stood by me over the years. San Bruno is truly a remarkable community and I'm humbled that so many of our leaders and residents supported my run for council. Former elected representatives, community leaders from our city boards and other volunteer organizations, supporters of all ages from every corner of the city. You all came through for me once again and I'm very grateful. So I, I just wanted to take a minute to, to thank, you know, everybody who so generously donated to the campaign. Thank you. And, and to my friends who endured heat and smog and, and, you know, the unbearable conditions to deliver our message, I thank you as well. And my friends who put signs on their lawns and people who spent countless hours on, on calls and Zoom meetings advising, planning and constantly encouraging me, I, I thank you as well. And my friends and my family who, who joined us for our sign waving event and, and who posted online and who sent emails to their contacts and made phone calls on my behalf and asked their neighbors to support me. I, I thank all of you. And, and I especially want to thank my friends and neighbors and supporters who voted for me. All, all of you, you have my, my deepest appreciation and I really thank you for this great honor and for, and for trusting me to represent you another term. Also, I have to say that I wouldn't even have been in this race were it not for my wife, Sandra, who continues to stand by me year after year, as well as the support from, from my sons, Michael and Nicholas. So I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to do this and for supporting me during these very demanding times. I love you all very much. Thank you for being there for me. Also wanted to, you know, just reflecting back to 2017 again, you know, I, I made a promise then that we would move forward together and I believe that we have. We, we have chipped away at some significant issues and we will continue to do so. You know, this pandemic has unquestionably derailed some of the progress that we were making. In fact, the challenges we faced in 2020 were almost too much to bear. We, we lost loved ones. We stood hopeless as, as others suffered through illness and through financial hardship. And like all of you, I am really eager to put this here behind us. But looking forward, I, I, I commit that I will make every effort to continue on the city's path to prosperity and to get us back on track. As we emerge from this pandemic, we will see a San Bruno that is poised to come back stronger than ever. And we will then refocus our efforts on rebuilding our infrastructure, improving our services and preserving our community's core values. Tonight, I am asking everyone to use this new beginning as an opportunity to look past our differences and focus on our common goals with a spirit of respect and mutual understanding. I am confident that we will get through this and we will move ahead together. Thank you all so much and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Salazar, and congratulations. And now we will turn it over to the city clerk for Mr. Hamilton.
Yes, I am bringing Tom Hamilton, our newly elected council member, into the room. Mr. Hamilton's wife, Karen, will be performing a ceremonial oath of office. I, just for the record, I did provide Mr. Hamilton the official oath of office before the meeting started in the presence of the mayor on Zoom watching. So Mrs. Hamilton, take it away.
I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Tom Hamilton, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Mr. Hamilton, yes, if you would join us and as I, we talked earlier, your county certificate, your city certificate of election, and I also have Vice Mayor Salazar's as well, but certainly wanted you to see that. And then we will turn the floor over to you for your comments. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable, honorable mayor, fellow council members, city manager Grogan, city staff and our neighbors here in San Bruno. I am grateful and excited to start my term on San Bruno City Council. I am also humbled by the trust placed in me by the people of San Bruno and electing me to this position. I want to thank my incredible wife, Karen, and our kids, Matthew and Lily, for their unwavering support and sacrifice as I took us on this crazy adventure. You don't need to tell me, or you don't need me to tell you that we are living at unprecedented times and facing enormous challenges as a city and as a nation. As we navigate this, I commit to you that I will, to the best of my ability, represent the needs and values of everyone in San Bruno, which means residents from every neighborhood, every business owner, folks who voted for me, those who didn't and those who didn't vote at all. I commit to you that I will recognize that I won't always have the right answer and that I will, won't always be able to get a majority, get majority support for my ideas and that that's okay. Working collaboratively on policy that helps the majority of San Bruno will always be my focus. I commit to my new council colleagues that I will always treat you with respect and that if we have disagreements about policy, it will never be personal. I understand that we will not always have the same vision for how we, to best serve our city, but I will always remember that each of us is in this position because we each love this community. I am fortunate to already have great relationships with each of you and I commit to deepening and strengthening those relationships as we move forward. I am incredibly excited to join the council. I truly believe there are many, many great things on the horizon for our community and I look forward to working with all of you, council, staff and public alike, to make those things happen. I believe in public service. I believe that we as a community can face any challenge if we face it together and I believe in San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations, Councilmember Hamilton. And if you'd be so kind as to turn off your camera for now and then we will, I'll let all the council members know when to come on back again. Thank you, sir. City clerk.
Thank you. And now we are at the final part of the swearing-in ceremony. This is where I will provide the oath of office to you, our re-elected mayor, Rico E. Medina. If I could ask for you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rico E. Medina.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For me, I will, believe it or not, folks, I'm going to try to keep this short to take a lead from my colleagues. I also wanted I also want to just thank this community. It was a long time ago that I worked at the rec center or that I went to Cappuccino. And had I ever envisioned... people tell me that I did. But had I ever envisioned that I'd be working for the city, being an elected council member, and then being its elected mayor? You know, hometown, third-generation resident would not thought it possible. But it's only been possible with the thanks to family, extended family, friends, people who've mentored me along the way by working at the rec from whether it was the youth at the teen room or those at the senior center who basically gave me advice when I needed it and even when I didn't want to hear it, that scolded me and set me straight at times. That made me a, shall we say, a stronger man and a better person, which enabled me, hopefully, to give that back to this community. And it is about giving back. It is so true for what my colleagues have said as far as just what a different year. Three years ago, last year, I look back at the tape to see that there was a gathering of folks on San Mateo Avenue after last year. And obviously, that can't be possible this time. But you know, even as we have a difficult time before us, I go back and want to be thankful and appreciative to all the staff. As back in the 2010 explosion, there was no blueprint. As what we're dealing with now with COVID-19, there is no true blueprint. But staff has adapted at all departments, at all levels. Each one of them add to this community, have performed their jobs while the safety of the residents and trying to take care of themselves. And that means being outside the box. That means that the Christmas tree still got lit at the rec center. That did not go. And instead of everyone coming to see Santa, Santa went out to the community. Those are things that staff has done and undertaken with fewer people. And I was on the county board of supervisors meeting, and I could hear frustration in some of the members of the public speaking about whether Dr. Morrow was right or whether the board should impose a stricter shutdown. And you can hear and sense the, shall we say, the frustration and that the patience is running out for some, whether it's on economics or whether it's just on what they were saying was civil liberties. And I know at times when it seems so dramatically tough that when you don't know what to do... And I always keep this. This was a heart that was dropped over to City Hall so many days after the explosion. And I've kept it because it reflects back that how bad we could have envisioned then after what transpired and what we're envisioning now, that we did get through it as a city, as we did get through it as a community. And of course, this affects in the greater, broader approach through our country. But it reaffirms that we can and we will get through this. And this year is different. Having an even-year election for the first time in our history. The fires that our fire personnel had to go to. Having a conversation with the Skyline president yesterday afternoon and what they're trying to do to come back and open up some point next year. And I've invited her back to speak and update us, walking with the Cappuccino principal and just hearing what they're trying to go through in education to try to get through and try to help out the community. I can't thank enough the staff for what they've done. I can't thank enough the community for embracing each other, trying to support one another. There are a lot of people in this city who are volunteering all the time, trying to help out in subtle, private ways and ways where groups of folks are getting together for food giveaways and other elements. So I want to thank everyone for... it will be only that which is a city with the heart and standing by our residents and our community that will get through it. I do see 2021. Everybody wants to say goodbye to maybe 2020. It will not be a click of the switch. The antibiotic term will be here. There's about 24,000 units that are going to be issued in our county. But it's not going to take care of all of us at once. So we still need to be very vigilant. We need to be cautious, and we need to be careful, and we need to support each other. And just going up to the California Conservation Corps folks today and seeing the work that they've done in the canyon. We are still moving forward, and we still are doing things that need to be addressed, even in these challenging, difficult times. And I want to thank Councilmember Davis. I want to thank Councilmember Welk, Tom Hamilton. Thank Councilmember Marty Medina. Thank Councilwoman Linda Mason. Thank Vice Mayor Michael Salazar. It is going to truly be us, and it is going to be about us setting the example so that we're not up till midnight, that we're not there going back and forth, that we're finding a focus and a vision and a way to make it the most successful streamlined in addition to making sure our residents are proud of who they see and what they have. So again, I want to thank everybody and acknowledge what we've done, what we've been through this year, and what we will embark upon for next year. And thank you to the community, and thank you to the residents of San Bruno for allowing me the privilege of being the elected mayor of the city of San Bruno. So thank you, and I wish all of you the very best. And now, if we could all please... cameras on. Thank you, folks. And we're going to move on from the swearing-in. And thank everybody for their patience. And great on the zooming in and out, guys, everybody. So thank you. You made it run smooth. On item D, and I'll read this. It's confirm appointment of Vice Mayor to serve a one-year term. And it is prescribed in our municipal code, and council has taken action in the past. And so unless the gentleman wants to sign... And based on the smile, I'm going to say no. So our Vice Mayor will be Councilmember to be now Vice Mayor Marty Medina. Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Medina. It's gonna be a challenge this year. But I believe we have the right team together. And I look forward to working with everyone, working with our community. And we just have to remember to be safe first, right? Let's get through this COVID thing. Let's clamp down as much as we can individually, do the right thing so we can be here to get a lot done. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's an honor to be the Vice Mayor again.
Thank you. And I bet you, Vice Mayor Medina, that we'll confuse people from time to time. So, okay, with that, we're going to move on to the last item. And it is comments from council members. And I've already... I know that Mr. Hamilton is... Councilmember Hamilton is fine, and Councilmember Davis is fine. Is council members Mason, Medina, I know. Councilmember Salazar wishes to speak. Anybody? Councilmember Mason, did you two want to wish to speak?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Medina? No?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was raising my hand.
Apologize, Vice Mayor.
It's okay. We're gonna get a little confused on that. But really simple. Congratulations, everyone. And thank you for everybody who ran that didn't win. I mean, it's a hard thing to do to put so much energy in an election. And congratulations to Jennifer Blanco and to Andrea Nache for their placement on the school board. Looking forward to working with them. Basically, this Thursday, there is a food distribution at Bel Air. It got moved up because it would conflict with Christmas. We're getting close to 200 vehicles through there. Things are really, really tight. But it starts around... at 2:00 to 4:00 at Bel Air School. So if you need a little help, come on down. You could also sign up at Second Harvest. So just wanted to remind everybody that's this Thursday. Thank you, and be safe, everyone.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really briefly, as you mentioned earlier, sir, this is our last meeting of the year. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to wish everybody who's watching and will be watching this recording later a very happy holiday season. Wanted to remind everybody to celebrate responsibly and remember that, you know, we're still living with this pandemic. As a personal note, I have a family member. My mom's sister recently passed away from COVID. And she had managed to stay safe this entire year, taking every precaution, and had somebody come visit her that was carrying the infection. And she lost a short battle with the illness. And so it was a reminder to me that I wanted to share with everyone that it is very real. It's still with us. And even though we've managed to... Some of us have managed to dodge it so far. It's still a threat. And so please be responsible when you celebrate. Be conscientious and, you know, be kind to others. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sorry for the loss, and I appreciate you sharing that with us in the community because I think too often... I was at Town Center a few days ago, walking around just seeing about the businesses, just not going in, but just taking a look. And there was a gentleman walking up to an eatery with no mask on. So people really have to take this serious. And I think you're... you sharing that personal story and information with us is important for us to realize. It doesn't take much, and it's very serious. For me, I do want to echo a couple things that my colleague said is congratulations, Ms. Blanco and Ms. Shea, who I believe Ms. Shea is on call with us, and also President Chavez, school board, who's on the call with us, and acknowledge that and thank them and wish them the best of luck. And thank Mr. Martinez for his service to the school board. And again, Councilmember Davis, thank you for your service. And I'm sure this won't be the last time we see your face or hear your voice on Zoom for some reason. But in all sincerity, I do again want to thank the staff. They do the work. They've had to take and do things differently and adapt to it. And unless you see and hear those things of what they do on a day... And I mean from the corporation yards to the office to our public safety personnel. They make me, as a former city employee, as Vice Mayor Medina is, was, is very proud. We could not do it. And I think, I hope, in 2021, we remember that. We can say all that we want from these seats, but really, they make the action happen, and they make the difference in this community. And we, together, should focus on giving them that respect, as Mr. Hamilton said, to one another, but also to our staff, giving them the heads up, giving them the information so we can have productive opportunities together as we move this city forward. To all of the city of San Bruno, to what my colleagues already said, please, please be safe. And please do what you can to support each other, to be safe for your families, for your neighbors, for your friends, for your loved ones, and for our community. So with that, again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. And we are going to go ahead and adjourn the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on January 12, 2021. And of course, it will be via Zoom. To all, my best wishes to you and your families.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.